Good evening. I'd like to call the August 2nd Planning Board meeting to order. Do you want to call the zoning board of appeals to order?
Good evening. I'd like to call the, I can knock, the August 2nd meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order.
And the only item on our agenda tonight is to discuss why Mark is coming in late.
I'm sorry.
No, it's the accessory apartment bylaw. We're just focusing just on that tonight. That's the only thing on the agenda. And we want to work our way through it. So, do you want to go, how would you folks like to go through? Do you want to go point by point?
I like that idea, first of all.
Just go right through it from the beginning?
Because I'm not as up on it, you guys are going to actually work it.
All right. Why don't you read the whole thing?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll start off with the purpose.
Okay.
The intent of the accessory apartment bylaw is to broaden the range of housing choice and foundness by increasing the number of small dwelling units available for rent, encourage greater diversity of population with particular attention to young adult citizens, promote more economic and energy efficient use of the town's housing supply, all this while maintaining the appearance and character of the town's single family neighborhoods. Definitions: accessory apartment, an additional dwelling unit subordinate in size to the principal dwelling unit on the lot, located in either the principal dwelling or an accessory structure on the lot. An accessory apartment is constructed so as to maintain the appearance and essential character of a single family dwelling or accessory structure there to locate it on the lot. The requirements. Number one.
We'll go through one at a time. Let's, now, let everyone digest that for a second. We'll talk about the requirements.
Yeah, we can discuss the purpose and the definition, so, okay.
What do you think? Is there any disagreement, or anybody on the purpose and the definitions?
One thing I would note on the purpose, just attending last week's session that the planning board had, which I thought was great and informative, and I know some members of the zoning board were there, and I think it was a good background. One of the things that you mentioned a few times last week was that it's not only for young adults, but also for our aging population, and so that seniors could age in place.
Right. So you think we should add age in place to the purpose?
Perhaps.
I mean, that is our intent. I think that's a really good improvement.
Yeah.
Because it is that way, because not everyone understands that. It actually gives the flexibility to do both. First have young people living there, and then move out of the big house into the small house and age in place.
Right.
So it's dual purpose if we do that. We saved a seat.
Slide down.
John?
Anybody else on the, John, we're going through point by point. Right now, we're just discussing the purpose, and Kimberly's made a suggestion we're going to add.
I think it's a good point. What's the verbiage you want to add there? Instead of young adult citizens?
And older adults to age in place.
Well, not even take the word young out.
Or just leave it and add.
Or leave it, young and adult.
Or just take it out.
To attention to young adults and seniors seeking to age in place.
Yeah, I think the age in place is an important point. That's what we were thinking.
Gets the message across.
Yeah. So we'll add both. We'll add age in place.
Young and.
Excuse me. Right. Just take notes and we'll do it later. Right. Right. We're not going to, we're not going to write here. Brian's taking notes and he'll do this. He's correcting me from going off on a, very good. Keep us focused, that's what we're doing. Thank you. We have the comment.
Not like the LCP meetings, though.
Right. And while we mentioned it, there were some definitions of, that I think came up at that meeting as well, of the word occupancy or whatnot, so we probably need to work a little bit on that, too.
I got a question.
Yeah.
Since I wasn't on the planning board at the time. The subsequent sentence, promote more economic and energy efficient use of town housing supply. Is that drawn to draw to try to draw some sort of parallel with LCP? I mean, because I'm thinking if you're talking just for accessory apartments, energy and economy issues, does it necessarily have a place in the bylaw?
I got an idea about that. I think the fact that you're having two households in one house by nature may be somewhat energy efficient, because rather than heating a big house for just a single couple or whatever, so maybe there's some energy efficiency there and housing efficiency.
Just out of curiosity, that was only a comment.
Anybody else?
Heating homes is the number one polluter.
Probably the most costly output of a homeowner as well.
And if you're building it new, the new building codes are a lot more energy efficient than the old ones. It's very difficult. So, on the requirements, only one apartment per lot, that's pretty clear. No one has any issues with that. And this is where the issues came up on our last meeting. Either the principal dwelling or the accessory apartment must be owner occupied for a period of seven months in every calendar year, or owned by a nonprofit organization or a government authority whose purpose is to provide affordable housing. Bob Ament suggested, you know, we really need to work on the occupied. How about, well, I don't know, we can work on that. We need some language to work on occupancy. It was brought up, a lot of people commented on, what about if somebody goes on a sabbatical? You know, they brought up all these examples that are all good things that we need to have exceptions for, so it could still happen. Maybe just can't be rented to, you can't have both of them rented. There's got to be some way that we can solve that problem, that the owner can keep the stuff in the house, not necessarily be there, but just don't rent it out to a third party, so you actually have two rentals. I think as a homeowner, that some people probably have the right in our country to own three homes and live in different places, you know, and go back and forth. So, we can work on some language there, Brian?
Yeah, the reference is to a domicile. It's your home base. You may not be there for some months, but.
But that's your home base for this. It's not somebody else's. Are there some way to work on that issue?
The other thing that was discussed was control. I mean, you just don't want to have a landlord that's not there. And you have to have some concern for the neighborhood, which you've had all through this process. So, I think there should be, it should be somebody living there, maybe not seven months, but at least six months. I mean, we can't have a lot that fits every shoe.
Everything, right, yeah.
But that was a big concern with.
Well, what about somebody that comes and goes?
Was the neighborhood.
What about somebody that comes and goes throughout the whole year? Somebody, you know, they visit people, they come back, they go back and forth, but they call it their home, they make it their address, they don't rent it to somebody else, and they make it their domicile. I mean, that's an issue we had to solve on this. Obviously, we're looking for the right language.
Yeah, but you go away for a year or two years, and.
Well, that is.
And they have a tenant there, and you have.
Oh, we're saying you can't have a tenant there.
Well, if you have an accessory apartment.
No, in one unit, but the other unit would be ready for you to come back and visit at any time.
Right, but you're gone, and there's a tenant there, and the neighborhood has to deal with that tenant. Maybe it's a great tenant, maybe it's a terrible tenant. That's why you want to have some control over this with the owner of the property.
So, can I suggest that before we pass definitions, we try to define occupancy and decide what will be the requirement of occupancy? Because I thought Mr. Ament had a good point that we're going to miss a lot of opportunity, because there's a lot of people who are really only here for three months in the year, and they have a big house that might be sitting, and some of them are heated, and it's a big waste. Maybe occupancy doesn't mean seven months or even six months. Maybe it just means that that is still your residence that you're owning and maintaining, and maybe that to have an accessory apartment in that wouldn't be such a bad thing. We're going to have a complaint-driven process anyway. If a neighbor complains, you follow up on it.
Yep. You'll work on it, Brian.
We'll work on it. There is no such thing as a board requirement.
Right.
Work on this as best we possibly can, and at the end, you know, if it comes down to certain interpretations by the commission or whatnot, it evolves.
Certainly listened to a lot of comments on that.
Can I just, I just want to, I know that we've had some circumstances where there's been people on sabbatical or military leave. How have we dealt with that in the past? Is it just?
The board administratively approved that the tenant can stay. The realtor, who is a friend, stepped forth and said that they would, you know, keep an eye on it, but the house could not be rented. The tenant could either live in the house or the apartment. It was up to the owner, but there couldn't be a second rental there.
So if you had a process, right, if the normal requirement was that you'd be there for however many months, I understand Bob's argument about three months being, you know, a lot of people are here for the summer and they'd like that apartment, but I think we have to be careful. Chris, but if you did have occasion to leave, if there was some process by which you could go back to the board or and seek approval to leave, so there's control. I think that's the key thing.
Should we take a public comment during the process?
I'd like to, we will take comment. I want to get through the board to board, and then we'll come talk to the public afterwards. I'd like to get, make sure that these two boards focus on it right now, and we'll definitely address it at the end, so save that thought. We'll come back to it.
And I'll just add, I'll say, you know, I think Brian's right. It's very hard to write the bylaw to anticipate every circumstance. That's why you have a review process, because that way you can look at a specific case and make a logical judgment about, you know, what's appropriate.
We have a process now, but not according to the reason, right? It's working, right?
Well, it's because it's the accessory apartment bylaw under 240-23I and 33I. It's a special permit process, which is why they came back to the board, because it's very clear you have to live there seven months. So, it was only because of the special permit process that the board had to make a determination on that.
So we'll have to put in some kind of process for exceptions as they come up.
I think in writing, I suggested, I was in the military, and I was gone a couple of times for ten months, you know? I mean, that does happen.
Absolutely.
So it just needs to be covered. It's not a problem.
Okay, we'll work on that one. The next one is the accessory apartment shall have no more than two bedrooms and a maximum of 800 square feet floor area, or 50% of the principal dwelling, whichever is less. Anyone have any issues with that?
Whichever is less.
Yes. So if you have a 5,000 square foot home, you can't have 50, you can't have a 2,000, 2,500 square foot accessory apartment. It's limited to 800.
Well, the 50% number bothers me because you said subordinate in size under definition. I think the current is what, 40%?
30%.
30%.
No more than 750 square feet.
So, I mean, to me, it's an accessory apartment. It's something less than.
We are trying to control it by size. I mean, there was an arbitrary number we picked up in discussion, you know, it's, we're not bound by it. Do you feel better?
I'd like to see it less than 50%. It could be 40. Could be more than the current.
How would that work if the house were only, say, 1,000 square feet, though?
It'd be 400 square feet, I guess.
Or 300.
I mean, maybe a house that small is not appropriate for an accessory apartment.
What if they have the right land, the size?
Well, they can, I mean, there's provision for adding, right, for.
Right. Well, you know, you can add on. We'd let them put a stove in. All this really does is let them put a wall and separate it out and put a stove in it.
I think an issue is what, in general, would accommodate a family or a workforce member in, is 800 feet enough? Is 750 feet enough? I mean, that has to be, and I think it was vetted by the planning board picking 800, but my comfort zone is the fact that it'll never be more. It's capped at 800.
Yeah.
So, I wouldn't want to be so prohibitive that, you know, if we start talking in terms of 50%, it drops down to 400 or 450, you know, who in their right mind would even consider putting a, well, I can't say that. I'm not going to say that.
Well, that's the other issue, is, you know, if it's a smaller, there's probably a point at which the accessory apartment, you can always take on a border. We have a bordering, you know, you can take on borders as part of our existing bylaws.
There's a big difference in bordering somebody's house and having your own key and going in and home.
There is, there is, but we want to ensure that, I think, I'm getting hung up on the fact that we're saying this is subordinate in size under the definition, so.
I don't have a problem with removing that. It's, what do you want to call it? It says border, it's smaller.
Well, I mean, if you're saying it can be half, then you're not saying that.
Yeah, I agree. I think I agree with Ken. I think 50 is a little.
It needs to be one or the other. Be consistent.
Yeah. I think 50 is a little much. On a small home, let's say somebody had a 800 square foot home, would they locate another unit within that? I don't, I don't think so. I mean, normally, I do, I permit these things in another town that I work in, our bylaw is limited to 800 square feet, no more than one-third the living area, and I've never, no one's ever come to my office with a 700 square foot house and wanted to locate an accessory apartment within it, but they've asked to add on to create one, but never within it.
But they could do that.
Yeah, exactly.
That's our bylaw, would this would allow for, if you have the land, you could build as much as you want.
So again, if you say.
You'd have to change your house.
If you're saying 50%, then you're saying, well, jeez, I could come in and double the size of my house, right?
Right.
I think you, I think.
Yeah, but you only, yes, you can, but you'd have to deal with all the, you know, Title V issues, setback issues, lot coverage issues, but you're still going to be limited to 800 square feet for the accessory apartment, no matter what you do.
And if you meet the setback and requirements of, you know, all the other requirements, you could put that size addition on your house anyway, as long as you have the room. It just wouldn't be an accessory apartment.
That's true.
So it comes down to, we're putting in a demise and wall and a stove. All the other rules are still in place. So we should list, we should consider this, see if there's, 45 work for you?
Anything less than 50 works, because it's subordinate in size.
Right, instead of equal.
Yeah, well, you could do that, but I would go for 40. You're increasing by a significant amount over what we currently have, which is 30%.
What about just saying not to exceed 800 square feet? It has to be subordinate.
Well, if you have.
If you have an 800 square foot house, you double it, you may get into a duplex. So we're trying to stop that view.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Now, that's 100%.
And that's the other sort of piece.
That's, it'd be 400, right.
40%. I just, I favor 40%. That's my vote.
Well, it's actually our job to craft it, but we're listening to your comments.
I appreciate it. No, I get that.
But 40 is arbitrary.
It's my unofficial vote.
We've heard you. Thank you. Okay, we're making progress. The accessory apartment shall have no more than two bedrooms and a maximum of, oh, I already read that one. We did, the next one is the total number of bedrooms shall not exceed four for the entire structure unless that, unless it is on a lot contains, when the lot contains 20,000 square feet or less. So, this is important because we have many smaller lots that are now on the sewer, and they can put as many, they can put up the four bedrooms in them, and this gives us some control.
Yeah.
Everyone with that?
Yep.
Okay, here's a big one, I think. If the lot, if the lot is within the Water Resource Protection or Coast Guard overlay district, the total number of bedrooms shall not exceed one bedroom for 10,000 square feet area unless the principal dwelling or the excess, and the accessory apartment are connected to the municipal sewer or onsite septic system with enhanced nitrogen removal approval by the Board of Health. Our intention was never to override anything to do with the Board of Health with this. They're always going to be in there, so what do you guys think about that?
And I have a question on that subject, if there's nobody else ahead of me. Is, as Mr. Waterbury mentioned, that would this trigger the duplex rule, where they would have to have the two-chamber septic tank?
It sounds like he says that's, that's the rule. I, we had not dived into that.
Well, we have to decide if we're going to define it as a duplex or something other than being that it's an accessory apartment rather than duplex.
Well, I, we, yes.
Oh, duplex would indicate that they would be.
Equal.
I think his point was, though, that with dual services of the washing machine and the gray water.
Right.
That that's where the impact might.
Well, that's one way of looking at it, but keep in mind, you could still have the same amount of people with just one kitchen. What we're really adding is two kitchens and privacy. That is really what this bylaw is adding. The ability to have a four-bedroom house, same amount of people living there, washing machine loads, where the real difference in this bylaw is the building code issue of a stove. That's really what it comes down to. When you're going through, if you're having the building, you put in two more additions on your house, two-bedroom addition on your house, it complies with everything. You go to get your occupancy permit, and you have a stove in one of those units, guess what? It's not going to fly. They're going to call it a second unit. If you don't have a stove, you have it anyway. So that's.
My takeaway of listening to Mr. Waterbury, and he, you know, used it under the guise of duplex, but I think it speaks more to two dwelling units, because they're replicating. And I get your point about, you know, you're cooking there, you have a stove, but if it falls into the purview of the Board of Health, where is that identified here? Or would it be as a matter of procedure with regard to a site plan review?
Well, it seems to me right now they're probably going to classify it under the same rules as the duplex, and our first, first statement about this was that we weren't going to ask any relief from the Board of Health, so it's just something that's probably going to be required by them unless we ask them to consider relief. But we can just let them decide, or we can maybe consult them.
I would think it'd be pretty expensive to change, even if you had the right-sized leaching field, but to have to pull out that 1,500, that tank, and put a new one in, that might be a hurdle that stops these from happening. So we probably need to talk about that with the Board of Health and understand that more. Right now, if you have a four-bedroom septic system and you want to carve a, you know, take two of the bedrooms and make it a separate unit, you don't have to do anything. You've already got a four-bedroom septic system.
Got it.
So, so I think he's more on the definition and the two-chamber, I don't know, it's pretty expensive to pull, those things are huge. You have to dig up your whole yard, pull, and it's just to put a divider in between, is my understanding. It has to be, it's the same-sized tank. We probably need some more.
Interpretation.
Board of Health, I'm understanding.
Don't mix?
He said two-chamber.
It's a two-chamber.
Two-chamber in one system.
And it's really, you can't really add a chamber. These are poured concrete things, so I don't know. We probably need to work on that a little bit.
We'll just get back to number five quickly. You guys don't want to look at lot size as an absolute. Like, in other words, if someone's got a 5,000 square foot lot, I think that's pretty, I think that's quite intense to.
I think lot coverage covers that, though.
It may, it may not. I mean, all right, 6,000, 7,000 square feet, you'd look, you know, there could be a situation where they're compliant with lot coverage, you move two families in, and you've got a pretty intense situation there. I mean, I wouldn't be happy, as if right, having an accessory apartment next to me on 6,000 square feet. You know, I, just from a personal, I think there should be a minimum lot size period. That's what I think, but just looking out for the character of a neighborhood when, because, because once a family moves in there, you'll never regulate the number of children or anything like that existing there, you know?
But keep in mind, the people could build the 20% lot coverage for a single-family home.
Oh, agreed.
They could do that right now.
Correct, but what you don't have in that situation, you have a single-family unit, and what you have in a pseudo-two-family situation is two independent living units, people that are not related, that are independent of one another and live their own lives, where at least you have a little more control. I mean, if someone has a big family, they have a big family, but I don't know. I'm not crazy about as-of-right on any size lot. I'm just not.
So what do you do about parking? Because.
Right.
You know, with, I mean, if you have a single family, you know, you got to say you have four, four people there, but two of them are going to be kids, once they get to be teenagers, it's a problem, but, but, you know, now, now you have two families with two vehicles, sets of vehicles, leaving and going at all hours. Is there adequate parking?
No.
No.
I think that's our biggest challenge, is going to be the number of cars and looking like a hotel rather than a house. And we're going to maintain the site plan review, and I think we're going to have to find ways to screen the parking, and a lot of places are just not going to work, because we're going to say, if you don't have adequate place to put the parking and make it look attractive and fit in, it's going to be a problem.
So, at least when I was on the planning board, we never said no in site plan review. We reviewed the site plan. We made suggestions, but we didn't do denies.
And I don't think you can deny.
So I think you're talking about some, I mean, maybe I'd be interested in somebody's take on that.
Doesn't site plan review just, and you would, obviously, you guys.
We're actually going to, no, we're doing more than site plan review. We're actually putting in a design review component into it, that it has to look like a single-family home, that it has to be designed in a way. We actually have a design review component in there, too.
But does that give you the ability to say you can't do it? So if it's an as-of-right use, does the design component act as anything more than site plan review? Is it the right to deny it?
That's a good question. things, so, I don't know, we probably need to work on that a little bit.
Can we just get back to number five quickly? You guys don't want to look at lot size as an absolute, like, in other words, if someone's got a 5,000-square-foot lot, I think that's pretty, I think that, that's quite intense to-
I think lot coverage is covers that, though.
It may, it may not. I mean, all right, 6,000, 7,000 square feet, you'd look, you know, there could be a situation where they're compliant with lot coverage, you move two families in, and you've got a pretty intense situation there. I mean, I wouldn't be happy, as if right, having an accessory apartment next to me on 6,000 square feet. You know, I, I, just from a personal, I think there should be a minimum lot size period. That's what I think, but just looking out for the character of a neighborhood when, because, because once a family moves in there, you'll never regulate the number of children or anything like that existing there, you know?
But keep in mind, they, the people could build the 20% lot coverage for a single-family home.
Oh, agreed.
They could do that right now.
Correct, but what you don't have in that situation, you have a single-family unit, and what you have in a pseudo-two-family situation is two independent living units, people that are not related, that are independent of one another and live their own lives, where at least you have a little more control. I mean, if someone has a big family, they have a big family, but I don't know, I'm not crazy about as-of-right on any size lot. I'm just not, but-
So what do you do about parking?
Right.
Because, you know, with, I mean, if you have a single family, you know, you got to say you have four, four people there, but two of them are going to be kids, once they get to be teenagers, it's a problem, but, but, you know, now, now you have two families with two vehicles, sets of vehicles, leaving and going at all hours. Is there adequate parking?
No.
I think, I think that's our biggest challenge, is going to be the number of cars and looking like a hotel rather than a house. And we're going to maintain the site plan review, and I think we're going to have to find ways to screen the parking, and a lot of places are just not going to work because we're going to say, if you don't have adequate place to put the parking and make it look attractive and fit in, it's going to be a problem.
So at least when I was on the planning board, we never said no in site plan review. We reviewed the site plan, we made suggestions, but we didn't do denies.
And I don't think you can deny-
So I think you're talking about some, I mean, maybe, I'd be interested in somebody's take on that.
Doesn't site plan review just, and you would, obviously, you guys deal with those regulations.
We're doing more than site plan review. We're actually putting in a design review component into, that it has to look like a single-family home, that it has to be designed in a way, we, we actually have a design review component in there, too.
But does that give you the ability to say you can't do it? So if it's an as-of-right use, does the design component act as anything more than site plan review? Is it the right to deny it?
That's a good question, and we're going to have to make sure that it is.
It does.
And then doesn't it just become what we've been saying, which is a special permit, which gives you authority to say, yes, we want this use on this lot, this makes sense, or no, it doesn't make sense? I think it's, was our, I know that was the major point in our letter was, and that's why, for exactly that scenario, maybe this doesn't make sense on a 6,000-square-foot lot, maybe it makes sense on some 6,000-square-feet lots, or footlots, but not others. So I think the ability, if you're already doing review, the ability to say no, I think is a good thing. I think it could-
With, with site plan review and design review, do you solicit input from the abutters?
I think we will, that was our intent.
Because, I mean, that's another really key aspect to me, is obviously we want to promote affordable housing, but we also want to protect these neighborhoods and the rights of abutters. And we, when these sorts of things come before us currently, we always hear from neighbors either pro, yeah, I think that, you know, they've, they've kept their house very nice, they, they're good neighbors, we have no worries about them having an accessory apartment, or sometimes we hear something different, and that's important information.
Is a 300-foot abutter list standard on our site plan review?
Yeah, it's a, all abutters.
Directive abutters.
Directive abutters.
Yeah, so that's a whole-
This is for background, the board for us, if you recall, the San Diego Station people, the board actually denied a site plan review because they didn't lend themselves any practical solution, and it's a lack of information. You were on the board, so they have, you have actually denied a site plan review for a commercial operation. They are rare and frequent in most communities, but you have that ability to say no. It could in fact doesn't lend itself any practical solution, you're going to every possible scenario.
So it's a higher bar.
Also CVS, CVS was a denial for-
Well, that was a special permit.
Oh, right.
And so, that 240, 216 kicked in on that one.
That's right. So I was, as a zoning board member, very hesitant about site plan review until I did, after, after I got off the board, did some reviewing as to what kind of powers, and Brian hit it, and there is case law. And basically, if I might, it says rejected site plans were, although proper in form, may be so intrusive on the needs of the public in one regulated aspect or another that rejection by the board would be tenable. So that gave me a little comfort zone with regard to, you know, if you're, if you're stacking apples to oranges with site plan review and a special permit.
So now I'm a, I'm a lawyer.
Okay.
And, which I'm not, by the way. And I want to get around this, and I say, well, what we're really talking about here is the use, it's the accessory apartment use, it has nothing to do with site plan.
No, but our bylaw requires that it looks, at some requirements, that it looks like a single-family home and being constructed in that manner, so it, we are saying it has to look like a single-family home.
Yeah, because a use is a regulated aspect.
So we're talking about structure, too.
Right, but, you know, when it comes to parking, I don't know what the criteria are to look like a single-family home.
I mean, let's see, I think about that. Well, number three in design standards, parking for the accessory apartment shall be provided in a manner to the degree reasonably feasible, which is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. That could maybe use a little more work.
Yeah, because reasonably feasible is a big, big-
loophole. I mean, should there be, should be, should there be two off-street parking spaces required, or, I mean, I don't know, I mean, that's, that's customary.
241A-
There should be adequate garage space, or?
241A says dwelling units, and so if we're talking accessory apartments, that meets the definition of a dwelling unit, so you have two. Having two or more bedrooms must have as a minimum two parking spaces.
And doesn't, it doesn't have a cap, though?
Right, but so the difference between a two, four-bedroom home for a single family with two, two parking spaces is just fine, and a four-bedroom home with two families, I'm not sure that's adequate.
It's not.
Because you've got husband and wife in one, maybe single guy in the other, that's three cars right there. You know?
We had eight when all the kids were little.
I, I get it, and, you know, as a single-family homeowner-
Let's not get into finding families, okay, because they're all different.
That's right.
I haven't been single for a very long time and raised three kids, I have a different view of the world than other people, so, you know, it's just, I don't think we should get into finding families, I think we here, we've got to deal with the parking.
No.
Right, but that, I think, what I'm saying is that you, you can have a lot of cars, if you have a bunch of kids that have cars. That's true.
But that changes over time, too.
It does.
We're trying to make a really long view here, and there's always going to be issues that come up with, you know, family visits, and they stay there, or family comes back when you don't expect them, and you're just going to deal with those things, and sometimes they'll go up, and then five years later, they'll, everyone goes away.
True.
Right, but we're aiming for the, I think the average condition, right?
Yeah, the average condition. But number five, you guys, number five allows this on all lots, just that under, it should-
What, give me a number.
Well, in Dartmouth, I'm just saying, in Dartmouth, we have a bylaw, we have an accessory apartment bylaw, it says that you cannot have one on a lot less than 12,000 square feet. So people will come to my office and say, I want to put, I want an accessory apartment on my property, and I'll say, excellent, how big's the lot? 8,000. And I just say, I'm sorry, it's, it's over. And you, and they're not, these smaller lots are not intensely developed, and, and, but I'm just, and I know this is just a draft, and it's very, very difficult to do this, and you guys are doing a great job, and I'm just saying, from my experience, it works fine. No one's ever been outraged or left my office angry and said, we got to change that, that's ridiculous, it's 12,000, that's what they voted at town meeting, and it prevents, that's a, that's a third of an acre, or, well, not really, but more of a quarter of an acre, but it prevents these smaller lots from having this problem. And I think on Cape Cod, I mean, I, you know, I wouldn't want, on a, on a, on a tiny lot, I wouldn't want, as a matter of right, a delta house. It, as, as the larger the lot gets, the easier it is to accommodate parking, buffers, open space, all of that, when you've got these old subdivisions that are diced up, you know, I, we have 12,000, and I, I don't want to compare the-
That would eliminate them in all of, most of Dartmouth Heights and most of Maravista, they're not going to have.
Good, good.
That's also where our sewer system is, and it's in our long-term goals of-
That's the nitrogen.
Building in the, the, the village-centric areas where we want to have growth.
Those places are already highly developed.
Absolutely.
Why? Because, because they have 5,000-square-foot lots. I mean, I've been out working off of-
With, with 10,000-
Maravista, and it's, they're cheap to dump.
Because 10,000 are open, there's a lot of 10,000-square-foot lots.
Yeah, I'm just saying, there should be a minimum lot size to enjoy the zoning bylaws.
I believe 10,000. And I think that might be a good compromise, because I believe there's a lot of 10,000-square-foot lots, but there's not, most of those lots are 10,000, or if you make them 12, they would eliminate huge areas.
And maybe we could consider saying 10,000 would be the, the standard, or some number-
10,000 or above.
Or some number in that area, and then if they don't meet that, they can apply for a special permit.
They've got a special, special permit, and you guys can take it.
And say no.
I would just say no.
What are you talking about?
I think if you just set a minimum, it's-
I would just say no.
I think, I like Paul's idea. I think, you know, there is a size below which, this is not a necessity, it is not necessary for homeowners to have an accessory apartment.
But, but in terms of the purpose, what you're trying to broaden the opportunity for housing.
There's plenty of lots that are big.
But, but the point is, you're taking away an opportunity from somebody that happens to have a lot smaller than 8,000 square feet. For example, I'm 92, my wife has died, I can, I have enough money from her insurance policy to convert a portion of this existing building on 8,000 square feet in Maravista to an accessory apartment.
Could be one.
You're, you're talking about prohibiting that.
Well, that's what, again, that we have this border, taking out of borders, so you, up to four, right, Brian?
Everybody's got a hobby.
So, you know, at that point, maybe you, you have a caregiver come in and they become a border with you or something.
Yeah.
So they cook.
Yeah. As you know, the board researched every essential bylaw on Cape Cod and southeastern Massachusetts, so these provide some comparative examples for you, and then we can find lot sizes and pick it up.
We'll work on this.
Yeah, so I'll just make a note. There will be a minimum lot size of some kind.
Our goal, though, is to try to make these things happen, not just put so many rules on that they don't happen.
Right.
So that's, that's where we're trying to-
Well, we should talk a little bit about why they haven't happened at some point, because I, I think-
It speaks for itself, we don't have them, we need them.
Well, it's not.
I think that three counted, we have 43, I think, 40, oh, 47 since 2003.
And 100 and something, oh, 140.
So I, people, and I-
194.
Yeah, and I think Bob had met me at that point, too. I think people are using the bylaw, maybe not as extensively as we would like, and certainly, I think the zoning board, too. We agree, there needs to be more housing production, we certainly recognize that's a goal of the town. And I know we sometimes come across as naysayers, or, you know, but I think we want smart development, too, and so that's, I think, Paul's idea about the minimum lot size, yeah, I, is being, you know, sensitive to certain neighborhoods.
To enjoy your zoning bylaws, and a buffer from me and a buffer from you, and it's just, it, that's just too, as-of-right on any size lot, is, I, I don't think that's good zoning practice.
But the other aspect that, that we've talked about within the zoning board is this, the order of requirements regarding it being affordable, in particular-
That may be the hardest one, right?
240, 216J, and the, and, and this need for a monitoring agent, and the loss of control. I can perfectly understand why someone would not want to-
That might be the issue.
And I think that's the section of the bylaw that we could easily modify to make it more-
240, 216 doesn't kick in at all on this one.
I understand.
We'll study it. Good points on this right here, we've got some work here, we'll, we'll come-
You know, I'd like to find a way for us to make some of these things count.
That's not going to happen.
Because I think, I think there are, I think there's probably thousands of them out there that are just not being counted.
I'd, I'd be more concerned with just getting them to be safe and have fire, smokes, and, you know, windows.
Appropriate safety, and-
Well, we'd have deliberately, if Pat was here, she would say, you know, we've, we've dropped the affordable thing from our definition, just, we're looking for housing for everybody, just to create housing. And that's, so that's, that's kind of the aspect, and we're trying to control the affordability with size.
Yeah.
And that's, that, that is the effort, and not to put in, you know, Big Brother coming, checking on you and the documentation.
So the Big Brother part, you know, there's pros and cons to that. Some Big Brother-ness to ensure that people are truly doing things in an affordable way is necessary, but if you don't allow people to have some control over who they're renting to, they're not going to want to do it.
Right.
And I don't blame them.
They just won't do it.
Well, that, okay. Well, we've heard all those comments, continue to work on.
So the explicit affordability is, is, is not explicitly required here.
But there's a, there's a little hole where, number six, where we're in the Water Resource Protection Coastal Pond Overlay District, if you don't have sewer-ing, you're going to use a denitrification system. That's going to be expensive, and then maybe they would take advantage of like a zero-interest loan, we talked about that during the process, but we didn't incorporate it in this, but there are other mechanisms that could be appealing to them, and maybe then they would agree to the affordable mechanism, if it's some, something that's going to help them push it over the top. We're not really sure yet how that would work, but we've talked about it.
So we, we already are going to a special permit if they try to put it in an unattached structure.
Right.
So that, that maybe we look at other things that would require, that there's, if they're too tight or for whatever, that there would be a special permit required, so that then 240, 216, and all the other stuff could kick in, but we want to have the bulk of them to be able to go through if they can, maybe it's the exception would, would require it.
Well, no, I mean, I, it's not a secret. From my perspective, this is dangerous because it promises to vastly dramatically increase density, and we already-
But that's exactly what we're trying to do.
Without control?
Well, we think there is control, we, I disagree with you, but we are trying to increase, we are trying to create housing. That's the whole intention.
Yeah, I, I just want to speak to that quickly. Dartmouth's a town of 38,000 people, we have a as-of-right bylaw for accessory apartments, I probably permit six a year. So that, as, as good as it is, there's not a huge demand for it, that may be different on the Cape because of the financial benefits that we enjoy here that people don't in Dartmouth, but I, you know, that, it's fine, you know, it's, it's a fine thing to do, but I just want to let you know, from my perspective, I probably permit six a year. It's not a, that people are not breaking down the doors for accessory apartments, but we do have it in place, and I just wanted you guys to know that there are towns that, that have it, that it's just not, you know, it's not the hottest item. But it's good.
Does Dartmouth allow duplexes?
Yes, in the denser residential zoning districts, they do, yeah, there's a, yeah, there's, but there's a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet and 150 feet of frontage, if you wanted to construct a duplex today.
Is there a sewer requirement as well?
Uh, it's, the urban areas are sewered, southern parts are septic, but, but yes, we allow two families, two-family homes, as I said, with 20,000 and 150 feet of frontage.
And how about apartment buildings?
Uh, not allowed, period. Yeah, I think we have a conversion of a dwelling unit, you know, no one's ever done it in my tenure there, but, but, uh, no, no, no multifamilies are trying to change that, except by variance or comprehensive permit currently.
So you say you're trying to create housing generally, not, not necessarily to affordable housing, but moderate, moderate.
Housing for everybody.
And what, do you have any estimates as to how much, what the additional population size of the town would be?
We are really responding to a housing study that said we need housing desperately, and we're hearing it from every agency in town, and we're responding to that. And we're trying to create housing to that where, we weren't looking for reasons why not to do it, we were looking for reasons to do it.
And we're also looking at the shifted demographics, too, where younger people are leaving, a lot of them because they can't afford to live here.
Can't afford to live here, so it's an housing affordability, not just housing.
Well, more housing is more affordable.
Good point.
But if you have an 800-square-foot apartment available, that's not going to break the bank as opposed to renting a house or renting a more expensive apartment. And also in denser areas, younger people tend to bike and walk more.
And our hope is that just by the size and the nature of it, it's going to be affordable by nature, rather than a whole house, or like you said, a luxury apartment on the waterfront.
And I think we do need to work on the state, because in order for something to be deemed affordable, you're putting restriction for 15 years, and we need to do something about that.
Right.
And, and that's got to come from the state and us working on our state legislatures to do that. So I think this could be a two-pronged approach. I mean, it's, housing isn't just an issue in Dartmouth, it's an issue in the whole state of Massachusetts. So I think we're not dealing with struggling with this.
You know, I, I wonder about the infrastructure, roads, fire police, so forth. I mean, that's another, if we go from 35,000 to 45,000 year-round, there's, there's consequences to that.
Oh, we seem to be going the other direction.
Yeah, we're trying to reverse that, actually, our population's shrinking, so that's where we're, you know, if that was the problem we were worried about, we wouldn't be doing this. Okay, we're working on a different issue. Okay, your concern is well-taken, but we're working on a different issue.
What's, the thing is, is just the younger people are just not finding it affordable here, and they're finding other places. here, and they're finding other places where they can do it.
Are they, are there jobs here?
There's people here complaining all summer long they can't find help, including myself.
Summer is different, though.
But it is.
Which makes, which is a weird thing about Dartmouth.
It's our, it's our town, it's what we gotta deal with.
Yeah.
Our population is shrinking and it's getting older, and the experts have said the way to deal with it, they've given us three things to go after, okay? The accessory apartment, the conversion bylaw, and multifamily. They refer to, those are the three recommendations of the study. We spent thousands of dollars and two years as groups reviewing. And what we're trying to do is take that, those recommendations and work forward from, and that's where we're coming from. I don't disagree with your point that it does that dense and all those things, but that's what we're trying to do. I mean, it's, that's, that's what they say we need, and I, we're kinda just trying to work that plan.
And with an aging population, there will be jobs that are gonna be created because.
There might be a lot of healthcare jobs.
That, I believe. But, you know, I mean, if you, again, a few years ago, when, on the planning board, we saw many proposals for assisted living. We, we created an assisted living bylaw.
How did that work?
Didn't work. Right.
Right.
Should we answer the design standards?
Yeah, let's talk about the design standards.
You want me to read that?
Yeah, go ahead. You pick.
So the design standards, accessory apartments, whether part of the new construction, reconstruction, alteration, or change to a single-family residence or accessory structure thereto, shall maintain the following standards. One, to the degree reasonably feasible, there's that word again. The architectural effect as a result of the accessory apartment being constructed within the principal dwelling or accessory structure attached thereto shall be that of a single-family residence compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Do you wanna talk about these one at a time or just read them all?
Does anyone have any questions on that? Does that sound okay?
Except for the degree reasonably feasible?
Yeah, I mean, so that'd be determined at the time the permits advance to the building department. He would look at it. The building commission would look at it and make a determination if a reasonable effort was made to make sure that this looks, it's subjective, but the, yeah, I do it, so whatever.
There's two reviews also. Remember, there, there's also gonna be a site plan and a design review by the planning board, plus the building commissioner's judgment, right? So there's actually three different reviews on it.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know why you need to put that in. I mean, it's, it's an out, and at least in my experience on boards, it's very hard to say no when there is a, that much wiggle room.
That first part, the degree reasonably feasible.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, they're still gonna, the architectural effect as a result of the accessory apartment.
I'm fine with that. Anybody else have a problem with taking that out?
No, I think that's a good idea.
I think that's a really good idea. Just keep this moving. I agree.
Yeah.
Don't have to waste time there.
I think that's an all of.
Yeah, take it out. Take it out of the second line, too. Just, it, it makes it stronger.
Yeah, makes it strong.
Yeah, that's a.
And it's hard enough to say no.
So we'll read it the other way. The architectural, and number two, the architectural effect as a result of the accessory apartment being constructed within a detached accessory structure shall be that of a garage or barn incidental to a single-family residence compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. And given, also remembering that this does trigger the special permit, so there's more control as well as the review.
And the, the reason why we put this one is 'cause a lot of people are talking about that, you know, it has to be attached, 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 attached. But if you think about it, there's some perfect buildings in this town that'd be just perf, perfect for it, you know what I mean? They have a, somebody has a barn or a garage, it just needs to be there. So that's why they, that's why we wanted to step up to the special permit, 'cause we wanted to just keep, keep them coming in. So that was the idea.
Well, I ended up subdividing my property to avoid that. Now I get two tax bills.
Lucky you.
All right, he did it.
So any other changes to number two?
No, it's controlled by a special permit.
Right, and we're gonna, again, we're not gonna draft them here. We're, this is.
So number three, parking for the accessory apartment shall be provided in a manner feasible, uh, to, in a manner which is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood.
Yeah, shall be provided in a manner.
Get rid of fees.
And at one part, one time we mentioned, uh, shall be screened or somehow, I don't know, we took that wording out.
Well, that's currently in the bylaw, in the parking, uh, two forty one oh eight, where it says, uh, parking will be screened as well as new entrances.
Keep in mind, though, someone could have five kids and can have six, you know, they all could be teenagers, and they could have cars parked up and down the street in a single-family home. And five years later, those kids are all gone. So we don't wanna make too many rules that.
Yeah, but also, if this is gonna be by right, and one owner can pass it along to the next, then these inherent controls are probably more important.
Yeah, that's, you know, trying to come up with a reasonable cap in thinking, in this process with, especially with regards to parking. Um, you don't wanna prohibit, however, the point of planning is, and zoning is not to be a bad neighbor.
Right.
And so how do you do that? You come up with a reasonable number of parking spots depending on your design review and your site plan review, what's going to be in there? What's the intended use?
I feel like we need to work on the parking.
Yeah, I agree.
Because we're gonna have cases where people are gonna develop these just to increase their value and then sell the property and say, oh, you can do whatever you want. This is a by right apartment, and the new people are gonna come along and maybe max it out.
Well, I, from, I put on my realtor's hat, though, a lot of single-family homes, people don't want the privacy, and they don't want the apartment in it, too, so it cuts both ways. You know, I don't think it, I don't think it guarantees that the house is more valuable. I don't think people would look at, I think it's more of a personal safety valve for a family for, that need, you know, to, to get over a tough spot or have some help. I don't think it improves the, it doesn't make the structure more valuable because of the income.
Does one of these, I, I'm just, I don't know where my attention is. Any of them need to be occupied twelve months?
No, seven months.
Seven months. So, so, I mean, I can.
We were trying to prevent summer rentals, is that's all that was for.
Right. I can, I almost see the opposite. You know, a lot of people with summer homes would say, okay, well, now I can put in a little apartment and I'll rent it seasonally, but that doesn't help alleviate the real problem, which is finding housing for people year-round.
Yeah, we're trying to think of a way to keep it from being these seasonal rentals, and we have some.
Right, they could rent it in the winter, but not rent it in the summer.
The idea is for it to be year-round.
I, I think we skipped over number three.
So that's what I said. You might say, one.
Requirements?
Yeah.
Either, either the principal dwelling or that accessory would have to be occupied twelve months.
That might touch.
Number three, either the principal, either the principal dwelling or accessory apartment may be rented, but not both. During the five months, the owner of occupant may be absent.
So does that imply someone's there twelve months? That's what.
Rental periods shall be no less than six months, and weekly, monthly rentals, summer rentals, so-called, are expressly prohibited.
Covers it.
Neither the principal dwelling nor accessory apartment shall be used as a commercial accommodation at any time.
Just a question about that rental period shall be no less. You're referring to the accessory apartment there or either unit?
Either, and both. And, well, I mean.
So that, okay, so you put it in.
It's either because there are not gonna be two rentals at the same time.
And, you know, all great institutions are eventually manipulated, but what you'll run into here is, there'll be a complaint made that the owner's renting both units. Someone will knock up and inquire, or that'll be, will be sent, and someone will say, well, that's my, I'm not renting it. That's my best friend, and that's my, I'm not taking any money. That's, you know, that's my sister-in-law. So it's very difficult to come up with a, right.
We're not gonna change that.
Right, but we gotta have the language and, you know.
Well, but that is illustrative of, I think, the issues that, when you're sitting on the zoning board enforcement side, because you get complaints from the butters and neighbors, and that, and then they're like, well, why can't something be done?
Right, right. And I'd have to get back to the person and say, well, I inquired, that's family, and they're not, it's not rented, and I'm, I don't know what to tell you. You know, so you're right, but that's what happens.
So then can you, like, require them to show you the lease or?
Not easily.
They say there is no lease. They say, in this condition, we're saying it's a family, and there's no lease. There's really nothing you can do about that.
Right, right.
It's, we're just, you know, this is.
We can have too many rules.
We're thinking worst case.
Right.
Gotta think about some of these things, because people will try to take advantage.
But if we try to solve all of them, it'll never happen. And that's really what we're talking about right now. You know, you gotta, people are gonna manipulate it, they're gonna try, they're, you're just gonna have some parameters that allow it to, to start happening.
What's going on now, anyway?
Yeah.
Well, that's right. That's right. It's going on now without.
Totally illegally.
Right. So imagine now if you, that's my point, yes. Imagine now if you.
Okay.
Make it illegal.
And my biggest concern is the proliferation of illegal apartments, where, once they've decided that this process is too difficult, they just say, the heck with it. I'm not gonna get a licensed builder. I'm just gonna get a handyman and do it myself. That guy doesn't maybe know what the rules are to do a safe apartment. And then, so I think we have a lot of those in town, and that's, I think that's a bigger problem.
Sure, that's true.
Moving on to procedures.
Keep reading?
Yeah, go ahead.
Procedures. Accessory apartment constructed within a single-family dwelling or accessory structure attached thereto, prior to the issuance of a building permit for an accessory apartment constructed within a single-family dwelling or accessory structure attached thereto, a site plan review, design review pursuant to Article thirty-nine of the zoning bylaw shall be conducted by the planning board, taking into account the design standards, requirements, and purposes of this accessory apartment bylaw. The application for site plan review shall include the information contained in Section two forty dash one ninety-five C, unless waived by the planning board. Should we talk about that before I go on?
I just have a question. I know Paul said this is working as of right in Dartmouth, but I just wanna, if they have to come before you anyways, if somebody has to come before you for site plan review anyways, why not just call it special permit site plan review? You're taking into consideration all the things that you would take in anyways, effect on the neighborhood, and then you have a, a special permit that you can, somebody could seek enforcement on this, particular to this property. I guess what's.
Cause it can't be appealed.
Site plan review? Site plan review can be.
Can't be appealed, okay.
It can be appealed either through, I think it depends. If it's tied to a special permit, then you can appeal it. You could always, yes.
It can appeal the building permit, yeah. It can always appeal the building.
Well, let's talk about that. What is, what else is onerous about the special permit process?
But appealing the building permit won't get you anywhere. They're just gonna make a determination as to whether or not the building inspector properly issued the permit. Then that's closed. But if it's tied to a special permit, the abutter, if he's upset with the decision of the planning board or the zoning board, has a right to adjudicate it, which is, you know, that's helpful. I mean, if, if you were totally upset with a decision made by a planning board through a special permit or, right?
If in fact, the zoning commissioner makes a determination, uh, it's a good, some can appeal your decisions before the board.
Correct. Right.
So there's relief there now. They don't like it. So then, if, if they don't like what we did, it automatically goes to you.
But it would only be, but, but it would only.
Right. A certain amount of time, but, yeah, but the problems probably won't arise till later.
But it, but.
If it's any permanent.
A site plan review doesn't get appealed. The issuance of the building.
Building permit.
The issuance of the building permit is applicable to the.
Yes.
There is a process for appeal.
Yeah.
You wouldn't get satisfaction from the issue, from appealing the issuance of the building permit, because they'd just make it, even if it got to court, it would make a determination as to whether or not, it, it, the board of, they'd be, they'd be making a determination as to whether or not just the building inspector just simply properly issued the permit that was before him. So, I mean, I, I don't know. I guess it's.
It has to go to the use, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So the building commissioner's gonna adhere to all the requirements of the bylaw which speak about use.
So, you know, let's talk about process.
Yep.
How it forms, or what, what are the characteristics of, 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 right, arrives for the business for that, not like an entry system, but there's a process, like it will eventually arrive. A site plan if it doesn't.
Yes.
And particularly speaking, the building commissioner attaches your permit, not your, actually, not your permit, you forget. Your letter is typically incorporated into that building permit. So, I mean, it's by the package, I think it's sealed out to.
But I like your idea of, if you're gonna go through site plan anyway, just make it an honest, make it an honest-to-goodness special permit where a butters are notified.
We're, we're trying to avoid that.
But what's the benefit?
Not to happen, and now you're taking us to the, I mean, that was our whole purpose in not making a special permit.
But I guess the question is, why? What is, if you're still going to the planning board, you're still having site plan review, all it is, is something that you say, yes, two forty, two sixteen is met. I, I just don't understand what the benefit is. And that's, I just would like to know. What's the benefit of that?
Well, the idea is, we, if, the benefit is, if they design it to meet our design criteria, it's gonna get approved very easily. We're gonna say, yeah, it's okay, and it's a streamlined process.
Isn't that the case for a special permit anyways?
We're trying to make user-friendly. Everything you do requires a special permit. Special permit to a novice means I have to hire a lawyer. Why can't somebody just come in here and say, I wanna convert two rooms, make a accessory apartment, not have to have a lawyer, not have to have an engineer.
We have special permit applications all the time where attorneys aren't there.
You have a lot of the withers.
But I, but you're, I'm just.
We hear you, we hear you.
So the reason, there's two, two things that go through my mind. A, your concern is there aren't enough of these accessory apartments being, being approved and developed. And I think the current bylaw is overly onerous, in particular, the affordability. We can all agree, I think, the criteria.
The deed restriction.
The deed restrictions, the need for monitoring agent, et cetera. We can all agree on that.
That's probably the biggest killer.
Right, that is it. Now you wanna go so far in the other direction. What I, what concerns me is that the, that the people within the neighborhoods are losing their rights to have some input over what happens next.
We have done a lot of research. We've talked to a lot of different towns, and we've got support from, you know, the state senate, just about every organization on Cape Cod, and they all say, get rid of the special permit. That's what we're trying to do. That is what we're getting, we're getting that from our experts, we're getting from our advocates, we're getting it from our real estate associations. Everybody is saying, get rid of the special permit side. And that's why we're doing it, because that's what people, that's what we think is the way to go. So I understand that you guys want that and we don't, and that's always been the main bone of contention between our two boards.
Well, I just wonder if we, I mean, in a sort of, we could do this, I'm thinking about, cause you're, my fear is you're opening what would be a floodgate that will result in.
Let, let us work on it, okay? We've definitely heard your comments.
Result in some.
Let's see, let us.
Happiness within neighborhood. The in-between thing is to make it, to get rid of some of these onerous things that are in the current bylaw. See what happens if we get more accessory apartments. Maybe that's enough, rather than going all the way to by right.
I think we'll be lucky to get them even if we go all the way. It's not, this is not an easy task. We hear you. We'll, we'll take it under consideration. Did you get to speak, John? It wasn't paying attention. Now you got your point in. Okay, I'm sorry. My corner, I couldn't see you.
I just, if I might ask Brian a question. With regard to site plan review, that goes through a public hearing process, correct?
It's not a hearing per se. They, they invite the public to come in and invite comments, but that's not a hearing.
So they do invite comments that would be relevant to impact?
Again, a site plan review is a review of a site. So they're really getting into the design aspects. It uses a single-family house with an accessory apartment. A lot is about, right. So, distinction, they're not getting into use of the site.
So for a, a.
We're getting to how it looks.
How it looks. So if I'm a neighbor and I say, look, I just don't, you know, these people have wild parties and I don't.
But then you're focusing on the people, okay? And that's exactly what we don't wanna do.
That's what protection, the butters is all about. Because, as I said.
People change. They move, houses get so.
They do, they do, but people have a right to enjoy their property. And that includes not only the owners that come to us seeking approval, but the butters who come to us objecting to what the owners next door wanna do. And our job has been to sit there and kinda figure out what's fair and what's right.
And so, once we approve it and the permit is secured, and it's gone on for a couple of years, and now we've got a neighbor that's complaining about this house with the two apartments. apartments, you feel like there's no more control?
I feel like you've lost control, yeah.
What if it's a single person or a single family that buys it and they're not-
Has the same a lot of trouble?
That certainly happens, and that's, I guess, where, as a society, we've drawn the line. I mean, there are noise, more than one occasion, please come to my house. 50th birthday, I was, we had to shut it down. Anyway. But, yeah, so there are limitations, but, you know, you don't want to have that happen all the time.
Okay, we'll work on that. We've heard everybody's comments on that, we're working on it.
It's one of those fundamental public policy debates, we're going to do it right as you're arguing. Of course, of course, Judy and her reports to the boards, you know, all of them vice contras.
Right.
Can we talk just a hair more about that, Brian? What would be the control in where we're headed now, being that it'll be, if we were to secure this process and issue these site plan and design reviews, and we're two years down the road and there's a problem at a house, how would we enforce it? We haven't got to enforcement yet, but should we-
Enforcement issues are always the same thing as, anyway. There are other sections of the zoning bylaws, you know, 110, section, issues. But it's always the hardest, how do we enforce it down the road? And can you go back to a special permit, if you find you want to? So, let me find, let me give some examples for the board, especially in 216. Never, never one of those easy decisions here. And if I could, like incremental approach suggested, I don't know, there's some policies and onerous conditions exist today, if it happens, could be the preferred alternative, instead of the moral, almost typical approach that you, well, I'm free. So, all well taken.
I do have one more question for Brian, just for my own benefit. In the case of, if it were by right, site plan review, design review goes to the building commissioner for building permit, he's obligated to adhere to all the regulatory aspects that he, that he typically does in approving or denying a use for a structure, correct?
Correct, he fits the code, he fits the zoning bylaw, he's open to that, so he can do that.
Okay. Upon enforcement, upon written determination by the building-
Oh, we just get the, we just get the second paragraph of the accessory apartment.
Okay, go ahead.
Second half of procedures. Accessory apartment constructed within detached accessory structure not attached to a single-family dwelling. In addition to the site plan review requirements above, an accessory apartment built with, within an accessory structure not attached to a single-family dwelling, a special permit from the planning board shall be required. In addition to the design standards, requirements, and purposes of this accessory apartment bylaw, the planning board shall take into account the standards found in Section 240-216 of the bylaw. And note as Section 240-192, applicability will be amended to include accessory apartments. Right.
Okay.
Zero, zero.
Yeah.
Yep, that's fine. And we also want to take away that one item of 240-216 with the monitoring, did you say J?
Yes, that, something needs to be done.
That needs to go away.
But that's, is that what we're talking about tonight?
Yeah, because if we-
Because we're going to reference it.
We want that out. Anytime we kick it into a special permit, the J doesn't apply.
Yeah, any-
Okay.
Yeah, that's smart, because these, these things, these monitoring things get lost in history.
That's probably one of the main reasons why we don't have it.
That is it. I mean, that's, I mean, I'd love to see ways of encouraging affordable housing, but, you know, they might involve something very creative, like, could we ever get tax abatements for people who have signed some kind of agreement to rent?
We actually thought this was creative.
Well, I think there is.
No, it's good, it's-
But I'm saying creative beyond just what our boards can do, you know? Could the board have selected?
We've talked about that, we've actually, on a local comprehensive plan, we've talked about that, but in our town, it's to put fees on everything, we just don't see that-
But if we're trying to create affordability, it certainly makes more sense for a homeowner who's going to be more willing to put in an affordable housing-
The trouble is-
If he gets something back from the town.
I think if you get something back, they immediately put the requirement J back in again.
Well, that's-
That's what I, that's what we see.
I, I hear you, and I just, there's got to be a way around that.
We'll, we'll-
And I mean, maybe it is a home rule issue in going to the state and so forth.
We'll see.
Well, that's a separate option, you know? Maybe if they wanted to make it affordable, and there could be a reduction in taxes or something, some kind of incentive, that's a good idea, that doesn't preclude what we're doing.
Right.
Right.
It doesn't. But ultimately, we would like to have some of these things count.
Well, yeah.
Excuse me, what is the importance of that anyway? To have them count?
Well, in my view, and you might not agree with me, John, I think we should get out from 140b. We should be in control of our, of our own, you know, how things get built.
And how many units do you think it would take to reach that goal?
Well, secretly, I believe we probably have 10% affordable housing in the town. It just doesn't count. Doesn't count.
So how many secret ones do you think there are?
I, I don't know. I, I think it's in the thousands.
But unfortunately, probably most of them don't meet code, or, that wouldn't be able to be really counted.
They were illegal structures, they were done without building permits.
Well, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that.
We don't know the answer either, but we understand that's out there.
It's a guess, and I'm just guessing too, but-
And it's a guess, it's absolutely a guess, I agree.
Has everyone, I was going to open up-
But I sure know a lot of people that say, "Oh, I have a, you know-"
The last thing, the last thing to read is the enforcement, did I do that?
Yeah, go ahead, can we open it up for public comments?
Enforcement. Upon a written determination by the building commissioner that the owner has failed to comply with these provisions, property shall be restored to single-family dwelling status within 90 days of said determination in a manner that complies with all requirements of the state building code and any other local regulations or bylaws. Then there was a suggestion by Mr. Amen that we seek a cure before we go right to the enforcement, which I thought was pretty good interim.
And we're going to work on that language for a cure, a period of time.
Would it be wise to include in addition, I mean, in that first sentence, "Building commissioner, the owner has failed to comply with these provisions." And then that was my last question to Brian. I mean, if the building commissioner's viewing his review of the plan or the permit based on other code regulation, then I think that might be a place to include that.
We're not going to draft it here. We've heard all his comments, we're going to take them into consideration, come back with a new one.
That's an issue that I would probably attach to it, so there's absolutely no, it's clear as possible.
Hold that thought for our drafting meeting, we'll, we'll have a shot at it.
Okay.
Anybody else into the, the boards, what?
Well, I mean, you know, summary process can enter the picture, obviously, with trying to remove these families that are in-
Right. The language about the monitoring-
Court to the tenants.
An affidavit shall be submitted annually to the building commissioner, signed by the property owner, attesting that the principal dwelling or accessory apartment has been owner occupied, occupied for a period of seven months or not otherwise rented, as set forth in section above. And that was another suggestion by Mr. Amen, that that probably was onerous and maybe not necessary, but what do you guys think of that?
Yeah, I'd nix it.
The back page of the monitoring, we had the annual affidavit from the owner to attest that it's owner occupied.
We were trying to respond to somebody's, how are you going to control it, so we threw that in, I mean, that was just an effort to do it. Okay. So?
Were voted after November 2018, so these are actually, I think, a real commitment vote.
Excellent, that's right. Right.
In, I have initial discussions when this came about, we kind of envisioned a situation where somebody does have a big house, they're older, they would like to stay there rather than sell the house, because you hear a lot of people saying they can't downsize, that there aren't houses around that are smaller, because everybody's torn down the big houses, and there's nothing smaller for them to move into. And this was a way for them to downsize and stay on their own property, so I guess maybe it's a little simplistic the way we approached it. But the other aspect too is other family members that might want to stay. I mean, I've got five stepkids, and we got a big house, we're empty nesters, and we could convert our whole second floor. And the way we can only do it now is if it's an in-law apartment and people, we couldn't close it off and all that, so that was the impetus for this, as well as to kind of create smaller units for somebody like me when I came to this town. I had to rent the house and get 40 people to live with me, you know, in order to afford the rent. And you have a lot of young professionals that would like to come down here, teachers or engineers or scientists that just need a small place to live. And that's, that's what we were thinking of, that's the, the need we were trying to meet.
Two needs, you know, both aging in place and for younger people, and actually in some, it would probably cycle back and forth over time, that's the vision, we'd do both. Yes, Brian, we all, some of the public wanted to speak, yeah? Yes.
Can I just ask one other sort of informational question? So this is in all zoning districts, single residence, ag?
We haven't limited so far. What you're doing by what's here is where the limits are, you know, the size.
Ag and rez.
Now they have.
Yeah.
Not, light industrial, not-
Well, the light industrial stuff.
Probably should take it out of the light, yeah, we don't want to put it in industrial.
Both of the applications received are typically residential and agricultural zones, and that was a discussion the board wants to have, where we-
Right.
So we'll have that discussion?
Well, that, that obviously is another way of sort of doing an incremental approach, right?
Pam, you had, you've been anxious to talk, I didn't let you talk at the beginning, you have some questions or comments now?
I've got everything, no, okay. Yeah, I have a lot of questions. One, I think this owner occupied piece is critically important, because I think if you don't have that and you don't have a period of time for the owner to be here, and I'm not talking about that's the only way it can be, but if you don't have some parameters, I could go away for seven months, I could rent my house, the renters could sublet the rooms, there's just, I've just been down this road multiple times in my prior life, and I, I'm just concerned about enforcement, which is expensive, because I think when you promulgate new regulations, you need to have an enforcement piece. But I also think that you need some way, and maybe it's you start with a target area, like we talked at the LBC, we just have a part of town, we just have a pilot program and see what happens. But without owner occupied, I think you run the risk of having-
We are owner occupied though, I don't understand, the same has to be owner occupied, what you're-
But the whole idea that Mr. Amen was talking about, it doesn't have to be seven months because people go on sabbatical, I think somebody goes on sabbatical, they come to the town and they say, "I'd like a relief from this for the next year, I'm going on sabbatical."
I think that's what we're saying, I think that's what we kind of discussed already.
It's going to be exceptions.
We did talk about that, having a process.
That they would have to come and ask for relief and file something, yeah. We don't know what it is yet, but we've already recognized that.
Okay, I think I, I missed that, I missed that piece.
Wasn't really clear what that is.
But that's, we did talk about it before.
I believe you.
I think the point was actually made last week, and we already knew that.
The other thing about the smaller parcel, if you have a, I don't know what the bylaws states, I know I read it, about how large a house you could put on a 15 square foot, a 1,500 or 1,200 square foot lot. I mean, you have to meet the setback requirements. But if you had a home, two-story, something with a finished walkout basement, whatever it was, I'm not sure you need to restrict an in-home, not an accessory, not putting on an accessory building, but within that home, there may be ample space to have an accessory unit. So I, I understand what you were saying, Paul, about-
Oh, thanks, yeah.
What you were saying, but I wonder if that's extremely necessary to have the lot size, I think it depends on the house size, in conjunction with the size of the dwelling?
I think lot size, for, again, for all the reasons we enjoy the zoning bylaws, so that you have a lot that's adequate in size to accommodate the possible, the possible intense uses that could be associated with two units. I think lot, I think lot size is, I think it's critical, but I mean, you know, I'm one guy out of 36,000 people, so, you know, no, I think it's absolutely critical. There are, you know, there are, there are concrete reasons for it, or it wouldn't be in the bylaws in my town that I work in, this is my town. But, yeah, no, I think it's smart zoning. You know, the Maravista neighborhood, for example, there's small lots there. I mean, create two families living on an eight or 7,000 square foot lot is, I would not be happy about that as a matter of right. I'd wake up one day and say, "Why are the carpenters here? Oh, we're creating another dwelling unit." Great.
Well, keep in mind, they could expand the lot coverage ratio right now, and I understand what you're saying, but you've got to keep coming back, because all this permit is allowing to put a stove in the unit, they could still do the lot cover, 20% lot covered, so what size lot did you, you said, eight, 7,000 square foot?
Twelve in Dartmouth, and anybody that comes in that doesn't have it.
We've agreed to attend conference.
Well, we talked about it. But, I mean, I think the lot cover, we were actually looking for the lot coverage to do that, but, well taken.
But like you guys, nobody sitting here would want it next to us. If we were in a neighborhood where it was very dense with small lots that were laid out in 1890, and all of a sudden, to the left of you and to the right of you, there's now two additional units and now one across the street, as a matter of right, no, that's not smart.
But keep in mind, they have to look like a single-family home, I mean, we've tried to put-
But I know, oh no, I know, I'm just saying, limiting lot size is, is a smart idea.
The big thing that came up in this, you're right, the apartment per se within the home isn't going to have any obvious impact, it's the additional use of having a second independent entity there that's going to have their own vehicles, their own trips per day.
And that's exactly what we're trying to create here.
Yes, I know, and we said, we agree with the goal in the appropriate setting, and the question is, is there a lot size limit that, at which it becomes inappropriate?
Maybe we should take a look at how much we'd be limiting ourselves with a lot size limit, see if, I think-
Because I've been working, you know, down in, down in Maravista and-
I think it wakes up just about every American place, big parts of town.
Most of those homes, there's no garage, and the driveways are already full.
But, you know, keep in mind though too, I, I knew, as I drove around this during the Fourth of July and other weekends, when I go through the neighborhoods I live in, this car's all over the place.
That's right.
They park in their frigging, that's our town.
Well, in summer, it's yours.
No, but the people come here to have a good time, they have lots of family come, they park cars everywhere, I mean, that's what we have just without, I mean, without this-
Without this, so people want to make it in the depths.
No, I don't think this is going to make any worse, we're already here. I mean, you drive around in our neighborhoods.
Maybe we disagree.
You know-
Brian, you're a professional planner, do you believe, no question about it, do you believe that this- Do you believe, no question about it, do you believe that this scenario, allowing these on any size lot, is smart zoning, from a personal perspective?
From my perspective?
Yeah.
I'm not terribly concerned.
Okay.
Obviously, it's a policy question the board wants us to take a look at for improvement. It's always good to never reinvent the wheel. We'll compare what's going on in other towns just like this town. They'll have a by right accessory apartment by law, and all the other planners will say, hey, not your disasters. But, you know, there's a lot of safeguards in this bylaw. There's some practical considerations, too. So I'm not terribly concerned, but obviously, it's a policy question that we're trying to achieve.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see any safeguards in this bylaw at all with regard to, you know, intensity of use related to a lot size, but am I missing something?
Well, we thought, honestly, that the lot coverage ratios and setbacks, already took that into consideration, and that is really what we're relying on. And we're saying, keeping back to the same process, that really what we're doing is, if you had a four-bedroom house, you could make it two twos and put a stove in one of the bedrooms, and make it a kitchen, and have a one-bedroom apartment, and you're there. And we want that to happen.
Mm-hmm. I understand.
And if that can fit, right now, on a small lot, if it can fit...
What I'm hearing is stoplights for it.
Right.
So I got it.
We'll work on it, obviously. I'd like to understand if... What I'm worried about is putting in a restriction and find out we just eliminated these things from going anywhere in town, because we have not lots more lots. That's what I want to study.
With a 10,000 square foot lot, I think you're safe, and I think there's still plenty of places.
I'd like to study that before... I know a lot of lots, so I'm not sure. Yes, in the back room, you've been ignoring this.
My name is Ann Curly, and I'm on the Affordable Housing Committee, and I attended many of your earlier meetings, and when I wasn't able to attend a meeting, I watched on the comfort of my home. I just want to make a aside, which I would not evade otherwise, but because of your question, I do have a PhD in urban planning, just so you know my philosophy. I have to really commend the board. I think that your entire process has been outstanding. The decisions you made are evidence-based, you looked at the studies that are out there, you looked at other towns. I think the bylaws are outstanding. I think you did outstanding job, and I think it's something we really need here. One of the things that I did, because I'm a researcher by trade, is that once you got this, these bylaws written, I looked at the two towns where I used to live for many years. I looked at the town I was born and raised in, Lexington. I looked at the bylaws for Lawrence Township, New Jersey, where I owned a house for 30 years. Their bylaws are very similar in that there's no special permit required if the accessory apartment is in the principal dwelling and certain criteria are met. And I can tell you from experience and living in these towns that neither town experienced Armageddon as a result. I really don't see a reason for a special permit when you have such well-drawn-out criteria for the accessory apartment. And I think the special permit is onerous, if only by perception of a lot of people who feel they must hire a lawyer if it's by special permit. It might be only by a perception, but it is onerous. And you mentioned that there are, that a lot of organizations have spoken to the question of special permit. One of them is the FALM housing study, which I know you read, and the FALM study specifically speaks to the fact that FALM overuses the special permit, or something. I have to apologize, because I know I didn't get the language exactly right, but that's essentially what it says. But I just wanted to speak up and say, I think you did a tremendous job, and I've watched the entire process. And as I said, I think it is evidence-based. I think you have a reason for all your decisions, and I really have to commend you for it.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so we're not done with this, okay? This is, we got some work, and so everybody knows, as the process goes on, we will draft it again, then we'll have discussions at our meetings, then we'll be taking it to the selectmen, and there'll be the public discussions then, when it becomes a bylaw, it goes to...
When you make the recommendations, you tell me.
Right.
So can I just go?
Yes, go ahead.
Just so I know where I have a little bit to do this. We want an Asian place reference and on purpose, which is a part of the young adult citizens. We wanted to look under requirements, two, with regards to your gender style. You want me to take a look at four, with regards to that percentage, 50%, we want to look at a lot size, and five, we want to check the board to help, with regards to the subject design, paragraph six, the requirements. Do you want to remove to the degree of use that is feasible? I think I'll look at that. I believe that was put in the recommendation. But I think we'll look at that. Paying procedures.
Definition for owner occupied, did you mention that?
Yeah.
We tried that on you, Ken.
No. I don't remember what I have to...
That's why I didn't write it down.
I think Mr. Duffy had a pretty good description a few months ago.
I think it's, if there's other places in the bylaw, that would be nice. Yeah, I know. We're going to change the planning boards and board of appeals under paragraph two procedures, and we're going to do paragraph J, regarding affordability, two, under enforcement. You want me to have some sort of cure there prior to enforcement? So we'll start working on that, and...
I've got one more to add that you probably missed.
Okay.
We are going to explore exceptions processes for the seven-month rule.
There was a process for relief under paragraph three, you're right, I have that.
Also, you should make explicit what districts this applies.
Right now, we're kind of crafting the rules, and maybe something we thought we would then come back and update, say, they very much apply this. We want to give less to it. And with that, the...
What about, what about looking at, sorry? Just, I'm just saying, 24216, I think we should...
He's already got it.
He said he was going to exclude it.
It's history.
So the warrant for the annual town meeting in November closes September 2nd. So we're looking probably at the beautiful town. Just so you, because I'm going on...
What? You know what? This is important, where I really would like to get it done, but it has to be done right, and I think we will have more time to do it right.
You're going to have to cancel every case.
No problem. God, even if I, you know, you're not getting very advice. So my second recommendation would be more of this. Just so you know, we want to discuss.
Okay, I want to keep it on our agenda to get it through as best we can, because sometimes if you say you're going to take the time, then it doesn't get done, it gets extended again. So we just got to keep working on it.
I hear you want it for the warrant.
No, I mean, you're saying it can't be done, I'll take your word. I just don't want it to, I don't want it to not get brought up for three months.
And the public domain, and the office downstairs, and I'm not doing thousands of other things, but realistically, to get it in front of the boards and have another full discussion, you're looking at more than...
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I would rather get it right, and I think the process we've been going through is the way to go about doing it, the FCTV, the meeting that you had at the library, this meeting, I just think it's the way to go.
We've got enough half big proposals in town meeting?
That completes our agenda, I guess.
I think that there was, the bylaw review update was also on the agenda, and that was just to check, oh, it was just to check the status of that.
Go ahead, continue. Our meeting doesn't have it. You can do it.
Well, I guess we're just inquiring with the...
Can we say thanks? I think we should say thanks to the planning board.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, too.
Yeah, I love debate.
It was nice to have the opportunity to have some...
Yes.
Yeah.
I did, I could check with attorney to update. The board, it's on the joint agenda of the board of appeals, and it also has the planning board, so if you want to discuss it as...
Okay, go ahead.
You're within the open meeting, according to...
Oh, yeah, it's, we just were inquiring as to the status of that.
Bob and Bob, Bob Ritchie and Bob Mitchell, are working in the background. As you know, the Senate passed, Senate Bill 23, I don't know whether it might be, that was the omnibus change to chapter four, yes, you know. So we slowed them down, but the big task right now is trying to get as user-friendly as possible, as fast as possible. And now that Speaker Brio has killed out the House, we're looking at the next session, but...
He's killed the omnibus change.
Yes, he did, they moved to the House. The session ends...
Yesterday. It just never...
So let me pick up some incidental things, but it passed the Senate. Last year, it passed Senate Ways and Means, this year, it passed Senate, the entire Senate. So back in June, when it passed the Senate, we told the process to slow down. We hope to have something in front of you, probably four times a year, at least to do some of the changes, pull the definitions on the section, get that process started. It will be many years before complete. Actually, it's, the bylaw was created in 1926. It's been amended, we estimate, about 4,000...
Sky. That's probably true.
Yeah.
So it might be that the tinkering in the bylaw is problematic, and that you're probably looking at something else. So, but we'll get at least that portion, that makes it a little more friendly up there, not only for the public, but for the boards and the staff that have to implement it, because that could, it's on our legislative system. But Bob Ritchie, Bob and Bob, I think Bob and Bob, I think working in the background, they have maps, they have the bylaws, they have the word format.
There have been a few things where, in specific cases, we've noticed, you know, pretty explicit contradictions within different sections, and Suri, we asked Suri to pass those along.
They have all that background information, but right now, we're trying to at least get them going on some of the format relax issues before we get into some of the things that we're doing. Because once you start pulling things out, we're looking at the sections, we don't, we'll go for program, and do it out in some sense. But, so you know, they are doing working in the background. But they have to slow it down because of the Senate.
I just wanted to go back, I forgot, I had said that we were going to have two special meetings to discuss the bylaw, and we were going to do it, and this, what I'm saying is this is one of those two. We already did one last week. Instead of doing another one ourselves, we chose to do it as a joint meeting. So that's where we, that was part of our plan, I've altered it a little bit, but this is the second meeting we spoke of, doing it together with you folks.
So there's now going to be a third for interested town meeting members? Because I have people asking me.
Well, they got to come to our meeting. Yeah, they can still come.
We're going to certainly have another outreach after we revise it and turn it up.
Well, I was planning on having it as part of our planning board meeting, not running another. We were doing Wednesday nights and Tuesday nights, I thought that this would suffice for now, and then we would put these comments together again. Brian Travis, we'll have our regular planning board meeting, and be open to the public, and everyone can come, you guys can come, too. You know, so we'll do it in that format, is what I was thinking. Do you have a different idea?
Whatever raises the boards.
Well, I had said we were going to do two, and I just decided that this was one, this became one of them, is what I'm saying.
Well, if it's, getting the boards together sometimes, it's just...
Right.
It's really difficult. But this is a home game, you can sometimes do away games, you know, when you're at your head or something, you can think about that, too, if you're in a way game.
Okay. Well, we don't have one on the schedule right now, then. I, we don't have another meeting scheduled.
We don't, right now, draft this up, have the board discuss it, as a board, as a board. I think when the time comes, you may have an away game, slot that is more...
Because I have tomorrow night scheduled the Herman Room, I'm going to cancel it, is what I'm saying. We're not going to do the outreach.
Okay.
Yeah. It's, I had just, we had tried to set it up, I had to go reserve those slots weeks ago, so...
Now, this is a...
That's in the very agenda, the motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Can I just make...
Yes.
You know, it's nice to hear positive comments from another board in town, but the heavy lifting was really done by the committee that was in the, the subcommittee that was in the video, Pat and Jim and Bob, with a lot of support from Brian and Marlene and Corey. And we struggled with this, it's come back to our board about a half a dozen times, we struggled with all these different issues over a long period of time. And I think the public hearing last week was excellent. Mr. Waterbury had some good comments, Amen, Ms. Braz, and a whole bunch of other people, too. And I hate to think the comments tonight were excellent from the zoning board of appeals, we should do more of this, so the positive comments really should go, the people did the heavy lifting, not necessarily, boy, there was a subcommittee that did a lot of the work. But it's nice to hear that, anyway.
Okay. Motion second?
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Your board at the same time?
Oh, we just, yeah, just close us out, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.